I'm just gonna really turn this right over to Dr. Lane.
Sure.
Yeah?
Give me one second here. Please, here. Hey Jay, I was trying to share and it says only host can share content.
I think I should.
Oh, wait, Sarah's got it?
Okay, try that.
Okay. So, if I'm pointing up here, I can't all those words to there? Is that right then? Is that what I'm saying? Oh wait, okay, let's just do this.
Okay. Remember this happened to me when I was on my.
Alright, we're good, we're good, we're good. You put me on.
Yeah.
Sometimes I'm like.
Like dumb.
Yeah, I know. As I say, when I look at my remote.
But I'm hearing something like a TV program or something.
I'm not even, I'm not even on yet.
I'm not.
Yeah, there's some.
Dr. Lane needs to mute.
Uh, I think Luke said that he needs to mute. Do you mean mute the TV? One more. No, you're good.
You're, you're good. My mistake, you weren't joined to the audio at all.
Yeah. Also, just let Sarah get set up with her notes here and then we'll be ready to roll.
Okay.
Good?
Yeah, I'll catch up.
Okay. Um, for tonight's update, um, I know I had alluded to the board in a Friday update that I was gonna share some enrollment information. And given the length of some of the presentations, I thought I could just share it. I thought about just sharing it to you in the update, but some of it's relative and kind of sits as a segue to what Bill is gonna talk about tonight and Steve's gonna talk about next week. So, not only is it an enrollment update, but it's an enrollment update plus. It has some extra stuff too, um, that goes beyond just enrollment and kind of ties, um, to enrollment in the context of how it influences the budget via the basic education funding formula, um, and a quick nod to some academic stuff that really Dr. Carnes is gonna spend some, a lot of time next week, um, with an academic update, um, regarding, uh, PSSAs and we'll talk about Keystone, because most Keystone are tough to compare this time, um, as a follow-up to what he presented earlier in the year. All right, so before I get into the enrollment update, one part of the enrollment update and more, um, is a pretty cool announcement that we just got, um, that I would like to make and recognize. We'd like to bring these guys in, in person, um, either next week or next month, but our high school team, team, uh, and I'll tell you what that is in a second, our high school team, team, um, finished in first place in the state, uh, and that's pretty cool. Team is an acronym. Team stands for Test of Engineering, Aptitude, Mathematics, and Science. Uh, they just got back from a three-part competition, um, in which they had to design something, um, they took part in a multiple choice assessment and an essay contest. Okay? Um, it's really a kind of, it's really a robust, challenging academic activity, um, that's them related. We sent five teams of four students to this competition and three of those teams qualified for the national competition, uh, that's coming up. And not only did three qualify for the national competition, we had first-place teams, um, in the state as well. And I think, uh, Mr. Menno, Mr. Chime, you can maybe talk a little bit more about that. You probably know a little bit more about it than I do at this point.
Yeah, uh, first, first of all, that score that that team has has been a top ten, also we think in the nation, so possibly even maybe in the top five. So, we'll see how that goes. Let's just call it national championship. We'll, we'll see, uh, but teams have changed over the years. They used to have a lot of this stuff given to them and then they would have time to plan and they would have time to write the essays and, and work on the design build. Um, that, that now has become a little bit more spontaneous, where they're really kind of genuinely seeing how talented these kids are. So, when they go to the competition, all teams walk in and they are, uh, they all handle the design builds there. And so, um, it's really a, a pretty unique test. We've had teams qualify for nationals in the past, we've had teams qualify for nationals almost every year. So, that, it is, it's still an extraordinary achievement, uh, but to finish first in the state is, is really an extraordinary achievement. Um, it is different, you know, back in the day, these teams would, they would be, um, practicing on the way to nationals, you know.
You know, they were rehearsing their DVS.
Practicing and like kind of, you know, working on the design, build concepts, uh, but teams change the nationals right now too, so that they also have that, um, spontaneity to it and like real genuinely can tell, um, I guess how, how, how quickly these kids can think. So, they will go to nationals with all the chances to compete there, um, we're pretty excited about, about all the teams that are going, um, particularly our senior team.
Good, we're looking forward to seeing them, maybe you can bring them in.
Yeah.
We have, um, some other groups, I don't know, we have, we have a lot going on tonight. Uh, we've got, we had a really impressive and important performance that we'll hear more about from the PJAS competition, um, next week and next month. Um, we have some really, you already know, we have some pretty impressive vocal talent, uh, that has performed well, um, as long as future, in addition to future business leaders. So, we've got some academic and co-curricular groups that are really doing some pretty exciting stuff that we'll hear more about, but that just came in, uh, so I wanted to make sure we acknowledge that we're really kind of exclusive accomplishments on their part.
And we'll send off and, uh, you know, it's like we do for the sports team, sending all these teams off. We're doing one tomorrow, it's a three-parter, um, so follow us on social media, you'll see, you'll see it on.
Band marches through the hallways.
The band marches through the hallways and then we, uh, follow them up with, uh, the kids. I don't know, the athletes are usually kind of, you know, come on, these guys are like, what are we doing? We're walking here, we're celebrating you, come on.
All right, let's talk a little bit enrollment here. Some of the information that I'm, I'm gonna show you is not gonna be too unfamiliar because a lot of it is similar, um, but a little bit different from what you saw last year from our enrollment update. But some of the contexts have changed, um, and there are some minor differences, uh, that had a significant impact, and then I wanna put it in the context of how enrollment, um, affects, uh, some of the budgetary stuff that we're gonna, Bill's gonna talk about them a little bit here too. All right, so, um, a little sluggish here on my end. What we're gonna talk about locally, um, is not going to look totally unfamiliar from what you see when you look at our statewide average daily membership. Now, we're gonna talk a little bit tonight about the difference in average daily membership and enrollment. Those aren't the same thing, kind of like we talk frequently about achievement and growth not being the same thing academically. We know that there are important differences between those things. There's a difference between actually average daily membership and enrollment that we'll talk about, but for the purpose of this slide and the few that follow, we're gonna use them interchangeably because they basically show the same trend. We're looking at, and what we talked about last year when I did this presentation, was a slow and steady decline in terms of enrollment, not just locally, not just in the county, but statewide as well. And you can see where that reflected here, uh, in the numbers from the Commonwealth. And we talked about what that looks like locally for us. This is about the same as it was last year. We're seeing about a steady two percent decline over time, which is not dissimilar from what I'll show you in terms of the rest of the county, um, and the IU in general. I'll show you some more specific content, but this trend line is essentially the same trend line as it was before. Anytime we're prognosticating out, you look here, we have twenty-two, twenty-three as the second, uh, the third from the right, and then we have twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. Any of those years requires some kind of guessing, um, and if, if there were a way to predict kindergarten enrollment reliably, that's a million dollar idea, no, that's not a million dollar idea, that's a ten million dollar idea for this, you could take nationwide. Uh, we look at a variety of different things, we're looking, uh, take a look at birth rate is within our district boundary, we look, take a look at the infant mortality rate, uh, we take a look at trends in terms of moving in, moving out, but we're really just kind of guessing, okay, in terms of what that kindergarten enrollment's gonna be. So, twenty-three, twenty-four, those numbers are a little lower than I actually think they might be, um, finger straw, but if they aren't that low, they're just gonna be a little bit higher. It's not like we're gonna shoot up in terms of enrollment, okay, they'll be pretty close to that. So, what does this look like in the district for us? Our high school enrollment, as you can see, is relatively flat, slightly trending now, but that makes sense because those students that were here when the population were higher are matriculating through the school district now, and at the upper end of the district. We see a more precipitous drop at the middle school, um, and then our two elementary schools are gonna be similar in terms of what their declines are as well over time. The elementary school at Edinburgh, and it's, um, I don't really know, we, we've talked a lot about whether Edinborough kindergarten trend is gonna replicate itself next year. Not sure that it will, um, I think it's probably gonna be a little bit more in that kindergarten enrollment class, but we'll just have to wait and see. And as you can see, a little bit of a roller coaster at McCain, but relatively flat over time, and I actually think that kinder, that, that three oh nine will probably bump up a little bit if kindergarten is up a little bit next year too. But, that's really not that dissimilar from what, what we've seen last year over the last couple of years. And what happens in Erie County usually reflects what's happening in the state, and what's happening at GM usually reflects what's happening in Erie County, more or less, on the look at some of those differences here for you in a second. And you can see our enrollment distribution currently within the district, okay? With the seniors on the right and the kindergarten students on the left, um, despite some ups and downs, despite some peaks and valleys, the simple way to look at this graph, I think, is that the left side of the graph, the left half of the graph, is fewer students on the right half of the graph, is the simple way to look at that over time. But that's where our distribution is across the district, eight as well. Uh, Board members, any questions on that stuff before I move on? So, how does this compare, okay? If we wanna take a look at us compared to the IU and some other places around us.
That's what I'm interested in.
Okay? Yeah, we can look at a couple of different things here. Let's take a look at this chart, um, and let me narrate some parts to you. We have this here, Board members, you have this in the folder. This will be up online, um, for everybody else to see too, so if you wanna take notes here, have to, anybody that's out there, you'll be able to see all this stuff too. The blue line is up, okay? The blue line is GM in terms of our student count. The red line is the IU, okay? And the green line is the state. So, if you look at us compared to the IU for example, okay? If you take that overall trend line, it's still gonna be going slightly down to the right. We do have a slight uptick from twenty-one to twenty-two, and really, what you can, what we can account for that uptick from twenty-one to twenty-two, um, I think it's safe to say that's us getting our cyber students back. We got our cyber students back at a rate higher than the rest of the IU, okay? We had, um, if we had a hundred and sixteen cyber students, um, during the twenty-one school year, we're down to sixty-eight this year, okay? Is that slow enough? No. Uh, that was the result of some serious efforts on the part of our administrators in terms of outreach, and we're gonna replicate and increase those efforts this upcoming year as well. So, to cut that almost in half in one year, um, it's, it's, it's pretty impressive, and we probably did it at a rate higher than the rest of the IU did in terms of bringing students back to the district, okay? Yeah?
And IU, you're talking about the IU region and the other seventeen or sixteen school districts?
Yeah, I should, I should clarify that. So, it was, yeah, so when we talk about the IU, we're talking about not just Erie County, okay, but the districts, yeah, Crawford and Warren as well, okay, that are, that are part of that. If, if we can see that in terms of Erie County trends too, um, you can see that in there, some of that will be parsed out later.
The IU trend line is an average and the county's trend line is an average? Those are, those are averages of the other districts?
Exactly, yeah, that's correct.
Thanks.
So, if we take a look at our student count, um, over the last ten years, um, we saw this, a version of this last year. We are losing students, but we're losing students at a rate considerably slower than the rest of the region, okay?
Wow, that's a trend trend.
Okay, some, yeah, worse than others over time, depends on how and where you want to look at these numbers, okay? So, if we see these things happening within the district, it's appropriate for us to react accordingly. And we've talked all of last year, throughout this year, whether we've talked about budget, whether we've talked about staffing, we've talked about doing things, um, with a sensible sense of efficiency that did not sacrifice the integrity of our academic programs, okay? We beat that drum repeatedly because it's what we task ourselves with, and these guys and ladies are probably tired of me talking about it internally, because it grounds all of the decisions we make. Where can we be most efficient, or how can we be more efficient, or where can we be more efficient without sacrificing the academic integrity of what we're doing? Not only not sacrificing it, but improving in some way, okay? So, what have we been doing? At least staffing-wise, we've been adjusting to that trend, that trend line going down to the right. In just one year, we've made some reductions. We've reduced five teaching positions through attrition, three at the middle school, two at the high school. Um, we've eliminated administrative position, okay? We've eliminated two front office positions, and we sold three buses. Not a lot of money, so the gas buses don't go much for nowadays, um, unfortunately, as we saw, uh, but we're not transporting as many students, so we don't need as many buses in, in the district, okay?
I have a question, y'all, when you thought about it. Um, now, the, I know we did five teaching positions this year, but I was trying to remember last year and the year before, and I was going through my, it's, it's been like, I'm gonna say it's like twenty positions over the last three or four years, but you still had a PowerPoint.
Long-term budget planning, over the last, what was the number? It was over a larger span of time, I can, I can get that for you. Do you remember?
Over thirteen years, well, no, it was a ten-year time span.
Yeah.
I think it was ending in two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty, there was twenty-five positions, I wanna say.
That was the number that, so, so it's not like we've been sitting here looking at budgets going, I don't know, what do you wanna do? I don't know what to do, I guess.
And, you know, our, when we evaluate, um, these positions, um, we, we made staffing adjustments this year through the administrative cuts, through the front office positions cuts. Given the limited number of teacher options we had this year, we didn't realize or seize the same opportunities for efficiency without sacrificing academic integrity, so we didn't make those decisions this year. We did, we evaluated each one of them and didn't see the opportunities that we saw last year, so we acted accordingly with that. And you can see, what, what, what have we talked about? The change in the student count, which is, which is the blue line, um, we have, and we'll continue to make sure our green and yellow lines, that's our teachers and staff counts, correspond with our decreasing count in students, okay? Likewise, not just with our teachers, not just with our staff, uh, but with our administration. We operate very efficiently, okay? Across the county, um, we operate with more students per administrator, um, say by far, um, than any other district in the region, okay? So, we are the opposite of top edge when it comes to administrative staff, okay? Um, we're very lean when it comes to that approach, okay? So, when it comes to staffing, just so we know that we're not just, you know, flash and burn, you know, blindly, um, the pla, well, there is one place that we have added staff, and we're looking to do that again this year. I wish I could draw it, but I can't, but you're just gonna, drop it. So, if you follow this, this is our current staffing and class size at McCain, okay? Um, it has the number of students, the number of teachers, and then the average on the right. Apparently, essentially on the right is the Edinburgh averages, just for reference, so you can kind of see that we're trying to maintain and keep things close there. We have used federal funds, um, last year, because we have a bubble group going through McCain, um, of an exceptionally high, and we have seventy-four students in the first grade class, they were in kindergarten last year. And we have recognized, Mr. Guest has talked to us, we recognize repeatedly the importance of class size, especially in grades K one and two, okay? Class size across the board is important, but it has the greatest impact in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade in terms of small class size. So, we have added a fourth teacher using federal funding, um, to decrease that average class size and keeping the system down to twenty this year, so it's in line with the rest of our averages. And we are doing the same for next year, 'cause next year's the last year that we have federal funds.
Okay, so I was gonna ask, so next year, by reason, right, next year sixty are gonna go to, to first grade, or the, yeah, so you wanna see, so you, are you able to shift people?
Yeah, so it's gonna be a certain, it'll be a, well, it'll be a third grade position, sorry, it'll be a second grade position, it'll be a second grade position next year to follow that up, I gotta make sure that's right.
And then you'll reduce first grade teacher down to sixty, that would be.
That'll go back to three.
Okay, thank you.
And in terms of, you know, speaking of, hey, when I was talking about, that was one area, and we, you know, we're using federal funds to staff that position. In terms of, um, what we spend, you know, to educate our students, in terms of operating efficiently, the gold line for all expenditures across the state, how much does it cost to educate a student? The green line, our peer expenditures, so in this chart, that's the IU, okay? Um, in this case, I have removed the city of Erie from the IU measurement, 'cause I think that's kind of an outlier, um, and it gives, I mean, it would've looked nice for a bigger chapter, but I'd more realistically, um, I would remove Erie from that. In other words, I, I don't wanna create a theme of saying that we do more with less, I'm just kinda telling you we do more than, more with less, um, than most folks do around here. Uh, we don't spend a lot to educate each of our students, and we do a pretty good job with, in terms of results, when we are educating them, okay? So, what, why talk about enrollment in the state budget, okay? Why does those things kind of go hand in hand? And I, I just kinda wanna set the context and a reminder for you of what our revenue sources look like here in GM. Just a reminder, we're getting about fifty-four percent of our revenue from the state and thirty-five percent from property taxes, okay? So, those are really the things that we have kind of some control over. You might think, huh, when we talk about state revenue, how, how, in what way do we have any control over that? And where does that money come from? That's the biggest slice of the pie, right? So, it's important that we know in terms of our revenue sources, where that biggest slice of the pie comes from, okay? So, what determines our largest source of revenue? You've probably heard of the basic education funding formula, okay? The VES. We're gonna talk about this and its parts in a couple of different ways, okay? But it's this formula that determines what our slice of the pie is going to be. So, really what I say, when we talk about the basic education funding formula, is we're gonna talk about enrollment, we're talking about average daily membership, and we're gonna talk about slices of pie. So, let's clarify in enroll, let's clarify enrollment versus average daily membership now, okay? Enrollment is how many kids can we have in our building, okay? That's enrollment. Average daily membership is, how many students are we financially responsible in the district?
Well, because there's some inside.
We might have some insider, we might have some in charter. These, these are not students in Mercyhurst or Prep or anyplace like that, we're not financially responsible for them, okay, unless there's some element of transportation. But enrollment are the kids in the building, average daily membership are the kids that we have financial responsibility for, okay?
And that's a, so, does that, does that also include the children that might have disease, plague, or, you know?
Yeah, yeah, like that, those two, those two, we talked about them in the meeting before.
I have, so, when you say the VES, that's the state's basic education funding formula?
Yeah, the state has created a formula to determine what, how much money schools get, which is really not accurate, it's really, it's more, what I'm gonna say is that really what the VES is, is determine what our slice of pie is going to be, okay? That's probably the more on.
So, the state can suppose something about this and say it's a gazillion dollars and we get a place in the gazillion.
Yeah. So, the basic education funding formula does not allocate a specific amount, okay? That formula tells us what our slice of the state's education budget pie is going to be, okay? Now, that varies from year to year. Our formula and the weight and factors in that formula are gonna vary, and the size of that pie each year is going to vary, vary from the state as well. So, that's the purpose of the formula, okay? So, let's talk about these two parts of the formula. You can see the top half of the formula talks about the student specific factors, we're gonna go through those.
And some detail.
Not deep into the weeds, but just to give you enough information to be dangerous in terms of what you know about this, and then we'll talk about some district specific factors as well and how that influences. Where we start with? We start with the three-year average daily membership, and we finish with an adjusted one, because the point of the formula is for the state to support the districts that need it the most, that's what they say, that's what they want to do. They want to support the districts that have the greatest need, and it's this formula that they use to determine who has the greatest need, okay? So, let's look at the student specific factors, you're looking at the very bottom, I gave you that little slice of the graph that I'm drawing before, okay? So, on the far left, we have a three-year average daily membership, okay? So, our three-year average daily membership is two thousand eighty-five point three seven two students, okay? I think they need to have point three seven students, two students in the class, right? That's what I think, what you're seeing, okay? Yeah, that's, that's where we start, okay, in terms of our average daily membership. You add in students, these are all factors that add students, okay? These are plus signs between each of these weights. You take poverty weight, in other words, the state, and it, I'm not gonna read through the specifics on how that is calculated there, but it uses different poverty measures to determine how many extra students, say, in the formula are you going to get. And our poverty rate, our poverty weight adds two hundred and twenty-one point two seven zero students to our average daily membership, okay? So, we're getting more students because we know, and the state says, that it costs more money to educate students that have greater needs, and that's been proven over time. So, if we have more of those students, the state will account for that and increase our average daily membership. There's a weight for ELL, because the state has also said it costs more money to educate English language learners than it does the average student. You take that total number, multiply it times point six, this year we only have one, okay? Or like, if last year we only had one, this year's coming up, that'll change because we have seven, okay? So, we're gonna talk about some of the things we're, at least in Steve's committee, you have some of that ELL information there. So, we have six tenths of the students are at ELL level. And then you take the charter rate, okay? The state's understanding that districts have a, have a financial burden for charter students, so you take that charter number, multiply it times point two, and you get fourteen point five students. So, if you go all the way, point five three eight two. You go all the way to the right, we have a new average daily membership, okay? Run that numbers through the first half of the formula, and now we have two thousand three hundred and twenty-two students, point, two thousand three hundred and twenty-two point two three zero students.
Almost a quarter.
Yeah, compared to where we started. That's the first half of the formula, okay? You go to the second half.
Question, question on the first, first half, just real quick. The three-year ADM, the ADM number on the left also includes the students attending charter, and the additional on this chart, fourteen point five three eight is, is basically enlarging what those charter students count for as far as our ADM metrics, because they're already been counted, now they're, now they're added twenty percent, basically. Thank you. No, no, it's, it's, there's, there's fourteen divided by point two, so there's seventy of them or whatever. I can't do the math in my head. Plus, another fourteen point five three, so we get counted, we get a hundred and twenty percent credit for every charter student, student in our average daily membership.
My question was, have you noticed the number under the poverty weight increasing at all for our district?
I could look back, I don't know, I can, yeah, I could look back, I can get that answer.
We watch. We used to get, we used to get firms, because we had the less students in the poverty, we get the less state money.
Not that much rate of firms.
And I don't, you don't know what I'm trying to say, well, it was when we were looking at our budget, because we weren't getting state tax dollars.
Yeah, but it's for the students, we're gonna need students, so, get it.
That's right. So, I'll go back. Far right hand column, two thousand three hundred and twenty-two point two three zero students, let's carry that over to the left-hand column now, so we have that same number there, that's where we're working from, okay? Two thousand three hundred and twenty-two point two three zero students. Now, in the students, um, in the district specific factors, we're multiplying, okay? Uh, we're multiplying these factors in each column, okay? Those of you that know me know that I was never successful, you that I am a math wizard, like any stress of the imagination, you can confirm that with my high school teachers, but I do know, anytime you multiply a number times one, okay? You get that number, that number or higher, if you multiply it times one or higher, you get that number or higher. Anytime you're multiplying a number times zero, I mean, it's not, less than one, less than one. Anytime you're less than one, okay, you're gonna decrease that number. So, there are two factors here that go into the formula. First is median household income. Our factor is one point zero eight one two, which means that our median household income in the district is really just kind of slightly below the state average, so we get a little is really just kind of slightly below the state average, so we get a little bit of a bump there. I think, ah, gosh, I don't want to misquote this. I feel like if the median average, if the median household income in the state, built on the last name, sixty-three thousand, we're like, we're fifty-nine? Or something like that, somewhere in that area. Anyway, that's where we are for the median household income. The next column, local tax effort and local tax capacity index. Basically, the state's looking at us in this category and said, what is your ability locally to raise taxes? And how much have you been raising taxes? If you have ability to raise taxes and you have not been raising taxes, the state says, you haven't been doing your part. Okay, so we're gonna count that against you. If you have the capacity and you have been raising taxes, the state says, you have been fulfilling your end of the bargain, so we will reward you for that. Our local tax effort and tax, tax capacity index is point seven eight zero zero. So, a way to think of this is, the impact that this has on us specifically is, and I'm not talking about the burden that it has on the taxpayer, I'm just talking about us as a district. It's like a little bit of a double punch to the gut. We're not getting the revenue for the slice of the pie in terms of how we're generating local revenue. And then we're losing state revenue. For not having our, for not having matched, our effort, not having matched our capacity. So you multiply, you take two thousand three hundred and twenty-two point three zero, multiply it times one point zero eight two, multiply it times point seven eight zero zero. And our total adjusted average daily membership is one thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight, point four two zero. So we have decreased our average daily membership running it through the basic education funding formula. And really, the only category that's causing us to go down and lose students and therefore lose state funding is our local tax effort and local tax capacity index. And what does that just look like? What does that look like for us as a district and for residents within the district? Let's talk a little bit about what this looks like locally. We're not the only ones, I mean, everybody's dealing with it. So I just took a little bit of a sampling. I tried to find some folks that were lower than us, tried to find what, almost everybody higher than us. But I just wanted to show you that, what a sampling of what that local tax effort and capacity looks like across Erie County in terms of what other districts are dealing with this. Now, for example, Northwestern is point five two, I think community cities around point five nine. Does that impact us? I'm not sure if we looked at it, it would. However, if you think about what some of those other categories are, the formula definitely benefits them in some of the other categories far more than it benefits us. Especially when we talk about median household income, when we've talked about a variety of other poverty indexes and a variety of those things, there's impact in. So if we're guessing as to why, or what the result of that will be, we'll see over time, that's for them to figure out. But this is what it looks like locally. So when we talk about in GM, our equalized mills and our tax rate, if you look at this chart, so what the state's looking at over time, or what, I don't want to say what they're looking at, oh, what it says over time is if you look at the gold line, the gold line is the state of Pennsylvania and what equalized, what their equalized mill, tax and mills have been since two thousand eight to twenty eighteen. The green line is the IU and the blue line is up here in GM. So we have been consistently lower than the state and other districts in the IU. And we see that also not just in equalized mills, but in terms of tax increases as well. From two thousand one to two thousand twenty-one, our local tax increases, you can see where they are in reference to the other school districts in Erie County.
So that's the total of all those years? Tax increases per year? Right? So that's six percent over twenty years?
So, you know, we have benefited, as, you know, residents have benefited for quite some time for, you know, from what is regionally comparative and incredibly low tax rate. Eventually, though, given the formula, what that means for us as a district is that it impacts us not in two, two places in terms of revenue. Income tax collection and also our state subsidy in both of those areas.
That last graph, that does, that data, could we get the background? Sorry, go ahead.
That was, I didn't put the source on this one, I think it was open, P I R S and G O S.
Six point six percent is not, can't be right for two decades. I've been, I've been on the board long enough to.
It can't be an average because we've been doing, we can't even.
It's not six point six a year, but it's not six point six over twenty years because I've been on the board long enough to know we did six point six in half a decade, so.
It's just a couple of years to do that.
So I don't know what's going on, maybe straight up.
I'll double check that one. I mean, I'm sure the graph is right, I'll just get the source on it and explain the sources needed.
Yeah, back to that slide, two, two slides. Play that out now, if that's, what, number one, what does it take to get us closer to one? One point zero zero zero? Understandably, understandably, Hannah, but what, and, you know, have we projected out what tax increases might look like over the next five or ten years? To get that closer to, we're not getting penalized yet, so.
So what, what Bill, what, what, what Bill has for us, what Bill will show you isn't necessarily over the next three to four years, how to get point seven eight to one point oh, but he'll show the impact on a variety of different taxing numbers and what that means for our budgets over time. Now, I would imagine over time, if you go back to the formula, it is explained there in terms of how they actually come up with that number in terms of median household income. And that, you know, so movement for that over time would depend on what our median household income is too. So there's a couple of moving factors in there. But anything that gets us closer to what our capability is would increase that L E T I.
We increase the threshold every year.
Yeah.
To the threshold.
Yeah.
What would that do to that?
It would, it would absolutely move it toward one.
One of the things I noticed from the E C I formula is it actually also means that when we have a L R T, we reduce our ratio because we're getting less revenue. Because it's taking total revenue divided by median household income. So losing revenue from having a root, a L R T actually lowers this L E, L E C I number.
So, you know, one of the things to think about as, as a taxpayer or representative body of taxpayers is what's your return on investment? And in terms of performance, just looking at our twenty twenty-two P S A data, we're the third highest district in the IU in terms of our twenty twenty-two P S A data. Would we like to be second or first? Absolutely. And we'll, you know, but we don't necessarily compare ourselves.
We're coming for it.
Yeah. That's just, there's a target on the back. And that's not necessarily the measure we're using, we're measuring ourselves internally at results and maybe some good results externally like this. But we've talked about why this is the P S A, P S A data. You saw this a little bit in the spring and now we can see it comparatively now. Now, Dr. Times is gonna go into this in much more detail next week than what I'm going to provide right now. But being in this spot is, is a pretty good spot to be in, in terms of that. Also, let's talk scatter plots real quick. Comparatively, in, in the dis, in the IU. So in scatter plots, especially in this scatter plot, it's good to be in the upper left-hand quadrant. The place to be is the upper left-hand quadrant. Because what it's gonna show you horizontally is how much money we spend per student, how much do we spend educating students? And then going up the left-hand side is our P S A proficiency rate. So we spend considerably less than most districts and achieve at a pretty high rate. When I say pretty high, I mean a high rate. Right now, and I know you can't see what those dots are, but only in twenty twenty-one.
That's at the end of it.
So back two years ago, the only districts that were higher than us were Fairview, uh, for Harbor Creek and Fort LeBuc. But as you saw from this chart, in twenty twenty-two, only Fairview and Harbor Creek are gonna be higher than us. If we look at this next year, okay? Like, this is the current data, this is the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one data. Also, when we're talking about return on investment for a taxpayer, if you take the burgundy line, okay? You take the burgundy line and compare it to the horizontal black line, and this is another one for which I removed the city of Erie, uh, school districts from this comparison as an outlier. Our grade street rate, P S, P S A proficiency versus our peers are nine point two percent higher than the rest of the IU minus Erie. Where, if you take a look at the green line, in terms of the average expenditure for other districts in the IU, we're twelve point eight percent lower than the other districts in the IU. So we get a better rate than ten left, educating our students than nearly everybody else in that. So what are our takeaways? There's two parts, there's kind of a two-part takeaway that I want to leave you with before I hand it over to Bill. Remember, the budget presentation, uh, the budget presentation versus my enrollment. Couple takeaways, remember, these come in two parts here. First of all, remember, enrollment is declining at a rate considerably slower than IU five, but it's likely leveling out, I would think. We've made proportional changes to match that trend. So as enrollment has declined, we've made appropriate staffing and instructional decisions on our end to match that decline. We're doing very, very well in terms of academic performance and have identified areas of improvement. You saw how we compared to the rest of the IU, but nobody's ever satisfied with that. We're continually ident, continually and have identified areas of improvement. And that improvement in the context of per people spending is actually. Now, let's talk about enrollment impact on revenue. We are feeling the impact of revenue decisions in our two largest areas of revenue, at state budget and local tax. So when we're talking about revenue, remember, we're getting fifty-four percent from the state, thirty-five percent local. G M S C real estate tax rate and equalized mill rates are historically significantly lower than the rest of the IU. In terms of expenditures, GM spends less per student than IU five schools and still, and the highest tiers are performing in those IU schools. And when it comes to the state formula, okay, the basic education funding formula, average, the V E F formula rewards districts who generate revenue locally and takes away from those who do not. According to the basic education funding formula, this is not me talking or Bill talking or anybody else talking. According to the formula, G M S C has not kept up with its local tax capacity year round, which means less local revenue and less state revenue coming into the district.
There's an interesting trend, though. We have also not fallen as much as other districts, which means we're gaining from other districts. And that means potentially our lower taxes are attracting people to move in the district. It's impossible to prove, but it's a possible.
I think that that hypothesis is not a bad one. However, Erie County data and state data tells us that those people are leaving. They're just not going to another place in Erie County. They're leaving the county and leaving the state.
Okay, well, people aren't leaving us as much as they. Just, I'm just saying, there's an interplay between the numbers, right? We are not losing as many and they're staying for some reason.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, we're doing something to attract them. Any other questions from the board? Before I hand this over to Bill? Sure. Yeah, so we'll have it next year.
Okay, so then when they reach third grade, they probably have a higher.
Yeah, yeah. Other questions?
No.
Okay, Bill, you ready? I will turn myself.
Okay.
I think it was an impromptu transition.
Anyway, I think I have five slides here and that includes the cover page. We'll try to keep it, keep it, uh.
Randy, that's great.
So back in February, we talked about a budget timeline and the, the thought there was that we could approve a final budget in May so that we'd have any time to get going on twenty-three, twenty-four. There's still a lot of unanswered questions with the budget, so I talked to Matt and we decided that in our best interest to push the approval of the final budget back to June, which means the proposed final budget would be in May. And this month is just an update rather than adopting a proposed final. So, we, what we're looking at tonight is what I, what I call version C. The first version was the resolution that was passed in November. Version B was the one that you saw in February. This is version C. And the, the ver, the official version C that you'll see in a minute or so, these are the things that are included and not included in version C. As you can see there, we know we'll have some savings from retirements, replacing the salaries and benefits for long-term employees with lower salaries and benefits. We're saving almost a hundred thousand, ninety-five thousand to be exact. We have savings of a hundred thirty-five thousand salaries and benefits from eliminating administrative positions. As Matt mentioned, we've been drawing back some of the cyber students, excuse me. So we've been able to reduce our projection for cyber protection by two hundred thousand. Think, something I mentioned in February, the pieces contribution rate, the employer contribution rate has decreased for the first time since two thousand two. So that will help us, it's, it's not huge dollars, but hopefully that will be the start of a trend going in the right direction. Because you may remember from last year, two years ago, when we did the, the strategy and the community advisory committee, that was one of the big three, pieces contribution. Resume the tech side transfer to capital projects. We took a holiday this year because we were getting some monies from the emergency connectivity fund and we did not have to make a transfer to capital projects for tech side. We'll resume that next year because that emergency connectivity fund was a one-time windfall. What's excluded from this version, there's no real estate tax increase included. That does not mean a decision has been made, it's simply a benchmark to look at to see what the numbers will look like in version C. There are no state subsidies included in version C, even though the governor's proposal included six hundred and fifteen thousand of increases for next year. Once again, that's simply to put a stake in the ground to measure some of the other options that are going to be available for the next coming year. So, here we go, this is the projection for this year in version C without the, without any tax increases and without any state revenue increases. So you can see for this year, we're projecting one point eight million dollar deficit. That's including all expenses and all transfers. For next year, this, this version is two point one million deficit. And the notes there are important, that none of the numbers that you're looking at here. you're looking at here include any of the federal grants. The R, the ESRS, the, the pairs funding, none of those are included in either revenues and expenditures. That's because when we get a grant, the revenues are always equal to the expenditures. So it doesn't affect our surplus or deficit, and it's easier to look at year to year if you don't have those grant monies in the distortions. Um, and, uh, as I already mentioned, uh, note D, no increases for taxes or state subsidies.
Question on that one. Um, previous, previously, we've been counting, putting a, uh, two million dollars, just years ago, we were doing a two million dollar yearly transfer to the capital. Does, is there any assumed transfer to the capital budget in the VOC, the version zero C?
There, there is, uh.
Other than.
There's the four hundred thousand for a tech buy, and then there's also some money there for the cafeteria fund, which, uh, had previously and historically run a deficit uh, within the past couple of years when we were getting big subsidies for, uh, free and reduced monies.
Okay, so only bond repayment, not, not actually trying to put money in the capital fund. Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, uh, this slide shows the impact on the fund balance of the, the, uh, deficits and the bond issues. This year, we started a fund balance with ten million, two ninety-four. Uh, the deficit from the previous page, one point eight million, and then, uh, we expect about three point one, three point two million from bond proceeds, and that would give us an ending fund balance of eleven million, six fifteen. Carry that forward to twenty-three, twenty-four, and factor in that deficit of two point one million, that would reduce our fund balance to nine and a half million roughly. Um, the, the footnote there, uh, we're assuming just shy of ten million dollars proceeds, uh, from the bond issue. Uh, we're going to retain some of that money in the, uh, general fund to reimburse us, ourselves, for, uh, the, the cost of the Erie County Tech School building project, and the rest will go to the capital reserve for the roots and the A T A Cs. Uh, this is a beautiful slide that I frankly detest, and I couldn't find, I couldn't come up with a, a really good way to present this information. I know it's, I, I don't like this, but let me run through it, and I'll explain why. Hopefully, you'll see by the time I hit the end of this.
It's really good, yeah.
Why it's so busy. So, on the, in the first column there, the, first of all, these dollars are all in millions, and these are what-if scenarios. Each column is a what-if. So the first column is version C, which we just looked at, and it's, uh, I would consider that a worst-case scenario. Um, the next column is a middle case, the far right is a best case, and, uh, the, the third column, yeah, as you see, is a break even. So, you'll notice the second row, expenses and transfers, is the same for all of these looks, thirty-six point nine million. So that's something that we're keeping constant, so that we compare, we compare the, the, uh, impact of tax increases and subsidy increases on the, the deficit. Uh, so what we have here, uh, as I already mentioned, the first column, no tax increase, uh, in, in not only twenty-three, twenty-four, but also going forward in twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven. So as you saw in a, a couple, uh, pages back, that's that two point one million deficit with no tax increases and no state revenue increases, and then, uh, down below that, it shows what the deficit would look like, one point nine million, two and a half million, and three point one million going forward, again, without any tax increases or subsidies.
When you're talking, talking local tax, you're talking state and local? Is that unclear?
When, when I, when I say tax increases, it's real estate tax increases, the local real estate tax.
What's the percentage that we would have had to have a referendum on the primary ballot?
The, the index is, for twenty-three, twenty-four, the index is five point one percent.
Okay, quick question on the rev, on the expenses. How do you, on, on future years, how did you increase the expense expectation? So you got three, thirty-six point nine, but what did you do for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven for expenses?
That, um, as we've talked about, uh, in the past, salaries and benefits constitute at least seven point five percent of our budget. So, you know what, uh, you know what our increases have been, average increases in terms of the contracts, uh, and also for our non-instructional. So the increases are around two to two and a half percent for salaries and benefits, and then, um, everything else is whatever we, we happen to know, pretty modest, really, one to two percent, just depending on the, the line.
Okay, that's great. I appreciate you adjusting for those for two years. I'm, I'm trying to put it in my head why, why we're, why we're making progress, but, but that's great.
So, uh, if I jump from the first column to the far-right column, which would be the best case, uh, in terms of, it's only best case in terms of financials, not necessarily in terms of other factors. Um, so that's, uh, the footnote is note D at the bottom. The best case reflects a five point one percent tax increase in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then three point nine percent for the next three years out. Uh, the reason for the three point nine percent is that's more or less an average of where we've been. I think the five point one is relatively high, and probably won't continue as our index going forward. Um, and then, also, uh, that far-right column includes all of the governor's proposed basic ed and special ed funding increase for twenty-three, twenty-four, and then another two percent, one and a half percent, and one percent thereafter. Uh, so why are those percentages decreasing? Um, well, it ties right into what Matt was talking about earlier, where the basic ed funding formula, um, with the re, most of the reasons we've been getting, uh, decent increases in this district for the past couple of years is because the pie got bigger. There was big increases to the state budget for education. Um, if the size of the pie stabilizes, and our percentage share stays the same, we're going to start getting, well, it won't stay the same because the way the funding formula is, we'll start getting smaller and smaller increases over time. So, that's worst case on the left, best case on the right. The middle case is exactly what it sounds like, um, pretty much half of the index as a tax increase and half of, uh, the governor's proposal for state subsidies. And then, just as an extra treat for those of you who like numbers, uh, the break even, um, which is, uh, what we thought would be interesting is if there was a three point eight percent tax increase for twenty-three, twenty-four, and then three and a half, three point two, three point five going out the next three years, combined with, uh, state subsidy increases of, uh, uh, all of the governor's proposals for twenty-three, twenty-four, and then two, one and a half, and one percent going forward. That would get us to break even in terms of a no deficit, no surplus for the, the next three years, which would stabilize our financial situation. We wouldn't even do our fund balance anymore. Um, and that would be, um, I think, a great accomplishment for the district financially if we were to be able to accomplish that. But first, there's a lot of assumptions built into the numbers, and, um, this could change between now and June when the state budget is passed. So, uh, I would just say, stay tuned, and, uh, we'll, we'll see when the state budget comes out. Hopefully, we'll have a better idea before we have to, uh, pass our plan.
Now, totally with, with, yeah, I'm totally with Bill on, Bill on, and Matt on this. I, I hate the slide below the numbers, so I'm, I'm definitely, definitely appreciate all the work that went in. I'm sure this was hours and hours and hours of work to get to these.
But it was a great tune, didn't it?
Yeah, exactly.
No, I just, I just think that, at first glance, when I look at it, I think, oh, this is, I'll never understand it. So.
Oh, that's great.
Um, no offense to anyone that doesn't like.
So, so here's the, here's the biggest challenge, right? We don't know that B F, S E F increase until after we decide on what our index is. So, that's the challenge for us. If we like the break even column as a commit, as a board, we don't know what that B F S F, S E F is. So that's, that's our challenge, to come up with an index decision as a board this, for this budget.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds good. Um, any other questions for Bill? And are we going to move on to Dr. Carr?
There, Mr. Menno and, uh, Mr. Tyne, they're going to come up and sit actually right where I'm sitting here in just a second. But before they do that, um, the February Board meeting, um, the board approved the adoption of some AP courses of high school. And during the discussion, uh, Mr. Weber, uh, offered his support, but also asked for us to provide some information about work that's being done and experiences being offered for those students who AP really isn't, uh, something that they're going to be particularly interested in. Um, tonight's presentation from the high school administration, um, is by no means a comprehensive response to that request. However, I think it's one component of providing an engaging academic experience that aligns to students' interests and aptitude. Um, this is work that actually begins in the middle school with Mr. Simmons, uh, in his career writing this class, but it's, I believe, setting our students up to be successful both in high school and then upon graduation. So, uh, Mr. Menno and Mr. Tyne are going to elaborate on this, but this is, uh, going to help us with the scheduling process. Uh, this is going to help us with the creation of new courses, um, as we continue to evolve based on our students' interests and the career pathways that we see trending in the district. So again, I just want to stress, this isn't a comprehensive response to your request. Uh, we'll have future presentations about academic, academic support and things that are going to be in basic ed as well. But I do think this is one piece of that. This is a hundred and five slides. You need to use. Bill, I'm going to need that slide. Also, I had to elaborate.
You got, yeah, you, you have a little more depth.
Yes, definitely. I, I will. So, uh, like Dr. Carr said, um, you know, I, I think, one thing I want to say is this is not a response to anything. You know, you asked a good question, but this is not a response to that. Um, we do goal planning every year, and our goal planning occurs, begins in the summer, um, goes into October. I think we submitted to you maybe September, October, our goals. So, you know, we wanted to begin with that. You know, our last month, um, Dr. Lane presented all of the goals and gave you an update on the goals for the entire district. Um, and, and that, the things that are highlighted up there are things that are still coming. That's where this comes in. Um, last, uh, maybe two months ago, Dr. Carr presented on the AP. So you can see that at number three over there. The second part of the academic goal, the enhanced opportunities for first secondary critical enrollment of students in high school with an established career pathway. That's the goal that we're attacking with this career pathway plan. Um, we've always done a lot of work on careers at the high school. So I don't want you to feel like we're now saying, oh, we need to pay attention to careers than career paths. We've always done that through many different ways, uh, mostly through the master schedule in general, you know, through having a, a varied elective, um, you know, we're proud of the fact that we have three tech ed teachers, and I think that a lot of, a lot of districts have abandoned their tech ed programs. We have three really, really good, solid tech ed guides. We have one of our art teachers back there in Katie Thompson. We have two art teachers that offer us, uh, two different paths in art. Um, and, and we have a lot going on with that. We have a college interior readiness class that's a graduation requirement in their junior year. We go on E T C S visits for kids whenever they're freshmen. Um, we're, we're following all the three, three-nine requirements, and we won't give you what three, three-nine is, but that's a graduation requirement. We follow that as well. So, our kids are doing a lot already when it comes to careers. Uh, but we decided to take it a step further with the idea of the career pathway, and, um, and really to establish career pathways. Uh, we did a lot of research on what our pathways could be here at General McLean, and how we could get kids to start thinking about them whenever they're freshmen. That's what this is really all about.
So, Judge, you can just briefly kind of outline the career and education work standards. And those standards mainly are four main categories for awareness, uh, career acquisition, career retention, and advancement, and entrepreneurship. And so you can see here, this is kind of our district's overview of how we approach as a district in, in our district's K-12 guidance plan, um, career awareness. And so, our K-4 is supposed to students' careers, the search of sport careers, their class rates, and then nine, three, twelve are ending those career pathways. We're going to get briefly into, um, the five career pathways that we're going to establish here at the high school, and what that's going to look like for our students moving forward. Um, but importantly too, you know, when we have students who leave high school, when they're done with us, they enter four main avenues after like, you know, life after the high school. So either they go to college, a four-year college, they either go to a two-year college, um, some enter the military, and then up, up, up to lots of students go into war for workforce as well. So this is our class of twenty-two, last year. Um, so as you can see here, we had ninety-seven students enter a four-year college. Last year's graduating class, seventy-seven students entered a two-year college. Um, so we had sixty-nine students enter the workforce. That's a significant amount, that's close to thirty-nine percent of our students, um, in those, so no third, if you know, is students with the shift out date and already enlisted. So confirm tall in graduation, okay? Um, so that's thirty-eight percent, just as you look for a trend over the years, for the last five years, it is our highest, um, you know, significantly at thirty-eight percent. We average around thirty percent, thirty-one percent, um, if you really dive into per class. But still, that trend is growing. Um, and why is that growing? You know, it's a variety of ways. I'm talking to our counselors. You know, we have lots of students who during the pandemic, especially that twenty-twenty class, twenty-twenty-one class, they were entering a tiny, uncertain area of what college looked like. Was it virtual? Did they, did they attend? Um, so that tech group may have held a ton, you know, and if any student takes a gap year, um, they're included in that entry in the workforce. So, um, just to give you that kind of information. And, you know, we have lots of students who are, and the, the value of trades is kind of coming back, and the importance of students returning trades is, um, something that's being celebrated in our community. So, uh, I think that's also helped that trend, um, increased gradually over time.
And there are other opportunities that are coming all the time. You know, the kids that our guidance counselors find, and they give the kids that are an alternative to four-year colleges. We have a student now who, um, is going to be going overseas to be, to, to be in daycare, uh, for, on military basis. Um, and it's, you know, you would never find a degree in that, but it's, it's really good paying, um, and so she's going to do that. So that, that falls into this number, you know, that we're looking at and the increase of. And obviously, the pandemic, uh, has played a role in that too, but it's not necessarily a patchy. Okay, so, um, the, the five pathways at, at General McLean High School, um, you know, when you think about how do you create five distinct pathways? There's a lot of different pathways that are out there, so how do you settle on just five? If you go to the P V E website, um, the P V E website has fifteen different career clusters. And so what we did was we selected five of those clusters that we thought were the most relevant for us. Um, what, now, when we get into scheduling at General McLean High School, it, those of you that have kids, and some of you guys have kids in, in the district, you get a lot of calls from me about us beginning the process and us getting into it. We get into it in March, and it sets up, it sets everything up for the next year. It's how we start to pick classes. It's how I can go to Katie Thompson in art class, and I can say, Katie, you had, um, this many art introduction requests, which will be very high, by the way, and I can decide on how many sections I'm going to run. So when we do that, we give presentations to kids, we talk about the classes that we're going to offer, we go through our program of study, um, and we let the kids start to pick. They go online, they go into Power School, and they pick things. We added a component to that this year, and that component is, is what you see up there in, in the second bullet, that's the career cluster finder. A lot of kids have done this anyway, um, through their college interior readiness class, but we did, we did it again. We had every student do it again, uh, and that's kind of the Naviance program, which we use as well. Um, when the kids went in and did, did the career cluster finder, it helps, it helps them to start to pick a pathway. And it, and I'll get into that in a, in a second when we click on the, uh, the link. But, um, one important note is, this year, we said with scheduling, kids will not only pick all of their electives, they will pick a pathway. And we reassured kids that when they select that pathway, it can be changed at any time. Our purpose was to be. Our purpose was to begin discussion, to have kids that, um, are coming into high school as freshmen and we're saying, we're asking you to pick a pathway. We're asking you to do this career cluster finder to see how it fits with you and to see where where you should be and see maybe how that evolves over time. So, um, let's take a look at, um, our our book. So first, this is our, if you haven't checked out our program of study online, um, you should check it out. It's under the General McLean website, it's under the guidance page, it's in our resources. Um, but that. Zoom in and fast. Okay, so, um, we added this to the the program of study this year. So if you go to the program of study, this is, we're really proud of this. There's a lot of work that went into this, but what it does is it's it's first page lists our five pathways and you can see the career cluster areas below. So we have an arts and communication pathway, business, finance and information technology pathway, engineering, industrial technology, human services and science and health. So when the kids do the career cluster, it will obviously start to show them where they they think they will fit. Um, that career cluster finder is not something that they they have it all, you know, exposed to them at once. They they answer a question and that question guides them into an area and starts to really funnel down where their, uh, where their strengths are. So the beginning part of what we have in our program of study is is that. Go ahead to the next page. And then we get into each pathway. And so the kids also, they reviewed this in their mentorship, um, mentorship teachers had this displayed, talked about it with all the kids. And so they did the career cluster finder and they went into this and this starts to really break it down a little bit further as far as interests go and then sample careers. So, uh, they looked at this and it said, okay, here's what are you at goodness and you do this, you enjoy this. And so it began to narrow down if they thought, okay, well, if I'm in arts and communication pathway, what might I do with that as a career? And then below we have the sample careers.
The sample careers is also down to your level careers, technical skills careers, and then your professional four-year degree careers. So I would give our students, you know, even if I'm in whatever pathway I'm in, I have options, you know, based on that first slide. Um, I'm here about where I want to go. Do I want to go to a four-year college? Do I want to do a two-year or do I want to, you know, enter a career right away?
So we go through all five of the, um, pathways and do the same thing. And then we, at the very end, we, this is, I give a lot of credit to our guidance counselors, um, who put this part together at our request. And, um, we said, take everything that we offer at General McLean and fit it into a pathway, multiple pathways, so the kids can see it. And this is when we start talking about curriculum, we start talking about courses we we offer. Now we can start to see where our gaps are in what we're offering and we can start to weigh out our pathways and say, we're not offering enough in this pathway compared to this pathway. Um, and we also will show you a second of student requests for for each pathway. But this is, this is really cool. When they finish this, I mean, this is really, really handy. Uh, it's amazing how many pathways, uh, will also will fit into, how many of our electives will fit into multiple pathways. So, um, pretty impressive.
Yeah, our students also during, um, mentorship time on the day that we did scheduling, they met with their mentorship teachers and talked about the electives that they were interested in, what pathways they were in. It was a really rich conversation as we went through mentorships. It was really impressive to see mentorship teachers talking to students, oh, what pathway did you end up in? Well, what electives are in there that kind of make sense for you or that you're interested in? I really, it gave a rich conversation and drive to that, um, selection of electives, which, you know, at times for high schools, it's like, I'm going to pick the features that I like, but it was a really rich conversation about, um, where I want to go.
Can I can I just make a quick comment? Um, English, French, Spanish, you might consider those for the, um, human services pathway based on the careers I saw in there. Law, some different things that deal with, um, obviously dealing with people, that kind of thing. So it might be a consideration to highlight languages as being part of the HS pathway.
Good point. You can see that if you want to scroll down a little more, it looks like we only have.
Great, great first cut. I mean, I love all the work that's gone on. I just noticed it going through the first first page.
Okay, so, um, we did this this year. So we went into, we told the kids, we had class meetings with them, we gave them the same discussion that we're giving you now. We said, hey, we want you to pick a pathway, you're not bound to that pathway, but let's pick it. So these are the results of our first, um, of our first selection. And, uh, so that was pretty interesting, you know, what do we gather from this? It's pretty balanced. Um, when we start to look at these things, we will make these, we'll keep this data, we'll look at this annually, we'll see how it changes. Um, and then we can look at what we offer, you know, as we go back to that chart on electives, we can say, look, we're really short here. This is the demand we have for our kids. This can also help us mirror some trends, um, in in in, you know, the world, what's happening, where are jobs available? What are kids looking at? Or are our kids not not in pathways that are fitting into, uh, potential jobs? So I just, I put this on there, uh, so that you can see how we're going to use this next year. This this will look a little bit, uh, convoluted to those of you that aren't used to reading a student's schedule. If you have kids, you're probably used to this, but we have four periods at General McLean High School, only the mentorship. So the top, if you look at test one, semester one, and you go across the top, that's our semester one classes. So the student would have, is that first period that we've got a mentorship, they would have my O two, and they would have U S history two, and they would have acting and set design. That would be their first quarter classes. Our period five is reserved for things that, um, I or identifiers for them. In in this case, drivers that is there because that class is a graded two-part class. So CE is graded in two different ways. So if you see a PE class appear here in period five as a holder, we'll have health components so that the teacher has a grade book for each one of them. So that holding zone in period five is where we put things like, if a student is in an academy of medical arts and engineering, it would appear there as an as an indicator for people who are looking at it. So what we did was we created courses and we made the arts and communication pathway, as you see here, into its own course. A course that of course has no value, has no credit, does not does not appear on the transcript, we can control all that stuff. And then we asked kids to pick their pathways. So if it's when the student picks a pathway next year, the pathway will appear on their schedule. So how does this benefit us and why is it exciting? Well, if we if we want to continue to talk about pathways, then everyone needs to be aware of that. So this is a conversation that you can then have at home. So when parents see schedules, they can say, you picked this pathway. Oh, I didn't think you would have picked this pathway. Why did you pick it? What are you thinking about? They're going to say, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know why I picked it. Okay, and then over the years.
My friends in that class.
Yeah, my friends picked it. What do you want from me? I just picked one of them. I don't know. Um, but hopefully they put a little bit of thought into that. Maybe they'll have a more, you know, profound answer to that. Hopefully they will, especially as they're getting older. Uh, but, you know, we want to look at that. You can look at that at home, but we want to look at that now too. Teachers see students' schedules. So, um, I keep referencing Katie, she's the only teacher here, but when Katie has kids in class, she can keep pathway information. So maybe when she has a talented artist in her class, she can look at that, she can see that they're in that pathway. She can, you know, talk more with them about careers. Mentorship teachers will also see this. So when the students turn mentorship, it's another tool for them to be able to refer to and to be able to talk with kids about careers. So what we're doing is continuously reinforcing reinforcing that idea of career pathways.
Yeah, so looking into the future, what does that mean for students? What does that mean for our school? You know, one thing we're actually tackling in the next year, um, that we're going to start to work on is pathway experiences. Providing our students to choose a pathway, um, various experiences in that pathway to give them exposure to, um, things like guest speakers. Guest speakers in college town careers in that pathway and guest speakers within, um, entry level or workforce careers in that pathway. Also included in there, we want to offer some business tours or experiences in the field, um, that students may be able to go to. And we'd really like to involve, um, during their eleventh grade year, towards the university, um, and have, you know, breakout sessions in that where they listen to somebody who's in that pathway, talk to them, um, about the offerings that Edinburgh would have within that pathway for them. Um, so those are some of the pathway experiences we'd like for our students to have, you know, we're starting to build those already next year. Um, like Mr. Menno said, having that in that system here also allows us to have school group and things like that where we can offer them, um, you know, invitations to speakers and those types of things, experiences. And the really important thing I was going to go before is industry recognized credentials, act one fifty-eight. How can you two pardon the weeds, but it is the Keystone requirement. Um, and one of the pathways inside the Keystone requirement, that's the pathways, that's the hot word right now, um, is the evidence-based pathway. And in the evidence-based pathway, um, students need to establish pieces of evidence. And one of the most important pieces of evidence is so you can get through there is the industry recognized credential. Um, industry recognized credentials are a variety of things. So we're really going to look into that, some of those opportunities through our team leadership for our students. Um, not only so that they receive that piece of evidence, but more importantly, so that they have a leg up when they are entering the work field long term. You know, so students will be able to be exposed to things like our education academy, we could be have the opportunity to earn a, um, paraprofessional certificate and have that as a, um, industry recognized credential. Other things out there would be OSHA certificates, Microsoft certificates, Adobe certificates. Um, all of those are industry recognized credentials, along with CPR, it's an FPI program that a lot of our students already have completed. Um, to give our students a leg up as they are entering the workforce, it's that's the avenue after graduation that they choose. And finally, like Dr. Carr said and Mr. Menno, you know, referenced, it is really important for our students in the elective choices. Um, you know, students, how do they succeed? They find relevance in what they're learning and they engage in their learning. And so it's going to be really important using that that piece as their as their boundary of evidence and relevance to student choice, um, in their course selection. It also gives us the opportunity to review our courses, review the electives that we offer, find current trends in the field and make sure that we're offering experiences for our students, electives for our students that are aligning to those current trends moving forward.
We also have, you know, we're we're working on a pharmacy technician program now, uh, and you'll be hearing more about that in in the coming months. And so that's possibly an industry recognized credential down the road. We have our GM works program, which we would like to have an industry recognized credential with that. So and and we're getting stuff all the time, you know, some of the local universities are reaching out to us with programs. Uh, some local businesses are reaching out to us with programs. We had, I just received one yesterday, I emailed a guy back, he called me in thirty seconds and I said, eh, I don't know, this might have been more of a sales pitch. But, uh, it was, it was an industry recognized credential in the insurance industry. And, you know, how do we get that? And those are the kinds of things that Jason and I are really interested in pursuing. Uh, we're not going to do them all and we're not going to be, you know, overwhelm ourselves with this. But, you know, when when he and I were were putting this together and we were talking about the possibilities with this, uh, there's a lot of things that we're pretty excited about. And and even just when you think about, you know, tours of our local university, which we have certainly done before, but doing that in a more systematic way with, uh, Edinburgh and and other local universities and saying like, let's let's get our kids in your door so they can see this maybe by pathway eventually. Uh, but if not, you know, just by entire class. So lots of excitement.
Could I suggest Lee Com also? It's the largest medical school and has a pharmacy program. You don't have to have a bachelor's to get a pharmacy degree. People don't know that. So if you do pharmacy tech, they could go to Lee Com to get a pharmacy degree.
Matter of fact, my daughter-in-law is teaching at the Dania now.
She is, she is.
She's a pharmacy professor.
I think one thing, um, that's important for this is I I know we laughed about the the conversation that we have with our kids when it comes to their schedule and whether they do certain things because we've had those conversations. Um, however, um, the goal of this, uh, the goal of this program is to make those conversations more meaningful, okay? Um, not perfect, not meaning that a kid decides in ninth grade what they're doing for the rest of their lives, but they can have an important conversation about, when we talk about life after GM, okay? Um, in that area of high school, right? At the moment you set foot in the high school, we're preparing you to leave the high school, okay? Um, that that Venn diagram of life after the high school, those two circles are ability and interest. And the more, um, a student has the ability to talk about what their actual abilities are and what their actual interests are, that have the language to articulate that, that means they have a better chance of leaving here in some sense in the direction they want to go. Okay, given the number of great jobs that exist that don't require a four-year degree and given the exponentially rising cost of four-year degrees, this is an obligation to have, I think, to prepare our students to be able to talk about this and have some sense of what their life after GM looks like. So I think these guys have really done a great job in terms of kind of, like Dan said, this isn't completely a requirement, it will. This is, there's been some great stuff going on already, but formalizing a structure and framework around it, um, organizing it in this way and developing the layers of it, um, I think is really going to benefit our students in the in the long run.
Well, we have you guys on the hot seat. This A-plus rating, like I know it was our logo, but there's a rumor out there that we lost an A-plus rating. What, is there an A-plus rating in Pennsylvania?
We're we're A-plus plus now. I know that like for our bond issue rating, there's 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 a credit rating. Um, there was the SPP for a little while. I think that's like the school performance, like the school performance profile was generated a number. And, you know, the state did that. Um, there are different third-party organizations that probably have something like that, I guess.
But we used to have it on our logo.
Oh, that was that was marketing. That's a branding. Totally different. That was a branding, that was a branding.
I just want to clarify because there's a rumor out there, we've lost our A-plus rating. I'm like, we didn't.
I I mean, I can't, I can't, I can't speak to what happened before I was here. Um, and I've only been in the district for two years, but I'm getting about twenty-three years. And I'm not aware of any kind of real system, um, that the state has ever used to do any kind of ranking in that way other than just marketing and branding that we may have done locally.
May I go ahead and just answer this because? Yeah. No, no, I mean, I'm just like Marissa and Rick came. That was like each each, um, superintendent gets to, you know, do what they want to do if they want to change the image somehow. That was Rick's design. It was a design. It was good and it helped us. It was good for a while, but that was a logo. It was only purely a logo and now we have a different one because we have a good reputation.
Let me just work on this. This is, this is, this is very cool stuff. This is great.
It was just the rest of it.
The one, the one, the one thing I remember from my.
Hey, I think we have one, we have a question.
Yeah, just the the one, the one thing I want to add to it, just another thing that GM has done well. The one thing that stuck with my students in high school was the time when they took their chosen job and were given the salary for that job and then had to make a budget. And I know you guys would still be including that, but I just, I love how this segues naturally into then people saying, okay, if I choose this career, what is the salary and then what will my budget look like? What will I have to spend in my life? And that is just, that completes the full circle.
Right, I completely agree with that.
But we we used to offer that in a bunch of different places and Dr. Carr came in and and helped us to streamline that, um, which is kind of a real benefit to our building. But we used to do that in our, uh, civic and economics class in eleventh grade. And so we, that spawned a more of a global economics focus and, uh, we have a bunch of different, uh, places that you could do it also. Senior seminar classes, some of our home access classes, um, and, uh, Matt with our applied math three has done that. So they've all abandoned that now and it's all heavily on the shoulders of our college interior readiness classes in junior year. So all juniors, that's, uh, that works.
Well, now this segues nicely into that and people will understand the ramifications of the pathways. It's very good.
Dan, I have a couple questions.
One, um, on your chart by T through twelve, it says that career exploration, um, is in NAVYON. Five to eight, do they take that survey?
Yeah, they take their evidence to the NAVYON. They they stack their evidence through NAVYON.
Is that also how you track, um, the career college readiness standards that are, you have to go a trace in every single grade level? You do all three of them?
Yeah, it could also know.
That starts at age one in kindergarten or?
No, they, uh, no, they, um, they get a piece of evidence or two pieces of evidence in third and fourth grade and then in fifth grade is the first year, they're going to have to have a set number and get six. And then they have to have another six in eighth grade and then they have to have eight in eleventh grade.
And that's where you start?
So, yes, correct.
Or not, yes.
Do we want to move on? Are we ready to move on?
We're good.
Yes, you want to, uh, Dr. Lane, you want to look at the policy and co-curriculars?
Yeah, we did not have a committee meeting in policy and co-curriculars, uh, because although we had on the agenda is the second reading of the policies that we talked about last month. I think we answered some questions on them then. Um, otherwise, there's no other items coming out of the policy and co-curriculars committee. So on to Mr., the Finance District Operations.
Yes, um, under Finance District Operations, um, first approval I am for consideration. We talked about in a committee meeting, but, um, being that we're pushing back the timeline on the budget to be in June, we're asking for approval for, uh, Dr. Lane and myself to approve requisitions that will be for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, but only those requests or requisitions that are for products and services which the district is already committed with some sort of contract or agreement or, uh, products or services which are required for the start of school and have a long expected due time. We've done this in the past years, um, when the budget is pushed into the June timeframe. Uh, we offered up, uh, some several of our buses for sale and we got bids on three of them. So, uh, we're proposing to sell the those three buses to the three highest bidders. Uh, and there was a a bid stimulation in the team's folder for your consideration. Uh, item number three, uh, we do not yet. Item number three, we do not yet have, but we expect to have bids next Tuesday for the fuel, the, the fuel repurposing that we talked about, the bids are due Tuesday, so we, we expect to have those for the meeting next Wednesday, and those dollar amounts in the bid summary will be on the agenda. Number four, we're, we're looking at reviving the facility usage guidelines, which we discussed in the committee meeting, and the main, the main changes are to compress the, the fee schedule and shrink it down from three to two categories, and we simplify it and make it district-related groups and non-district-related groups, and the fees will follow that, follow that pattern, or those categories. And then we are proposing renewing the leases for the IU and for YMCA, the lease space at McKenna Elementary School, and hopefully, Mr. Guest has no problem with that. I usually try to text with him, but since he's here, he can raise his objections if he has.
Do we usually do growing and learning at this point, or not?
Okay, growing and learning, we had a three-year agreement with them, which is expiring June 30th, so we're going to meet with, with them, and we're going to talk about some things that we might like to change, and some things they might like to change. So that'll, that'll be coming either in May or June for renewal.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see here, what do we got here? I think the rest of these are executive session items. Oh, I'm wrong. We have, for consideration, approving the technology buy, which is a total of $482,061. And there's details of what is being proposed in the team's folder for anybody who's interested. And now, I believe the rest is all executive session this year. So that's all for that and the other.
Did we get through curriculum instruction? All of that, so we're all done with that?
Nope, I, I, I did.
Oh, I thought you said we were ready to go.
Don't worry. All right, so under curriculum and instruction, we also did not have a committee meeting. Most of the items on the agenda relate to personnel, and we discussed in executive session. That includes items one and two. Item number three is requesting that the board approve with the Northwestern Intermediate Unit Number Five Emergency Substitute Teacher Consortium Program. That's just a continuation of our participation in that program in the 23, 24 school year. We obviously have substitute teachers who apply directly through the district. We also have substitutes that go through the IU, and we can access those individuals as well on days when our teachers are not here. So looking to continue that agreement. Number four on the agenda relates to ELL services, also provided by IU five. This is specifically consultative services agreement for language instruction education programs in the 23, 24 school year. This allows Carone, who works at the IU, to provide guidance for us when any issues arise related to ELL students. We've been, we've had that arrangement in place this year, and I have only used a couple of hours with that. But it's important to have in place to make sure that we're doing what we need to do for those students. And like Dr. Wayne said, that number has increased here this school year over previous years. Item number five on the agenda also has to do with English language services being provided by the IU, but this is specifically individuals who come into the district to work and provide services for our students who are identified with an LIED, Language Individualized Education Program. Another service that we utilized this year in the middle school with two of our students, we had Ann Bortner, who's done a fantastic job, we have four ELL students at Edinburgh, she's a certified, she has her certification in CLB, I think is what it is. Yeah, anyway, she has a certification and has been providing those services during new year instruction time. It's possible that we may be able to facilitate that again next year at Edinburgh. It's also possible that we may need to rely on the folks from the IU. So that's item number five on the agenda. Item number six is a matter of personnel. Item number seven, we have requests for a few field trips coming up. For item A, Lauren Casano and Tracy Peir, two of our social studies teachers in our high school, are looking to take a group of students to the World War II, or, excuse me, to the Eldred World War II Museum in Eldred, PA. Just passed Warren, I'm glad they put that on there, because I didn't know where Eldred, PA was. But those students are currently enrolled in the World War II class, and also the AP US History course. That field trip's on the 28th of April, and the group plans to leave at 7:30 and return at 2:30. Under item seven, part B, Rachel Barsnick is a science teacher at the middle school, looking to take one of our middle school students and one high school student, along with another chaperone, to the CJAS state competition in State College, and that competition runs from May 14th through May 16th. It's budgeted within the high school building budget. And then lastly, Katie Thompson is here tonight, she is looking to take a group of high school students to the Carnegie Art Museum in Pittsburgh on Wednesday, May 17th, and those are students who are enrolled in painting one and drawing two classes. Any questions on those field trips? Thanks. That's it. The last three items on the agenda are all matters of personnel.
Is there anything else, Bill? Right, Matt, or anyone else here? Or is there any other business here at the table? And if not, we're going to, sorry, we're going to move into an executive session to leave in personnel and students at the plan, and contracts, and resignations, and new hires. And so, are there, is this a study session? We will not vote, and a, 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 this is a second meeting, and nothing else. During the executive session. So thank you all for being our guests this evening, and this is the end of the week. Oh, great, okay. Then we'll keep you there.
I think you have to ask everybody to leave, and then we lock the meeting or something.